I'm gonna have to work on that.
It's crazy.
I got, right, I gotta work on that.
I stayed because someone stayed for me. I've had good teachers who have poured into me during my toughest times at high school and even after high school. So I stayed because I want the students to be able to make a connection with me.
I want to have an impact. I want to impact kids' lives and make a difference in them for their education, but also in everyday life, somebody to care about them.
The teaching staff that was here when I was a student here, they leaned into me and, you know, my home situation when I was a kid, and helped me as a mentor and led me to go to college, go to the military. And I think having those good leaders before me has developed me into the leader I am now.
Make a difference, make it date in public schools.
Make a difference, make it date in public schools.
Make a difference, make it date in public schools.
Make a difference, make it date in public schools.
Make a difference, make it date in public schools.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today. Are you?
Are you?
Are you?
At DPS, attendance is important. That's why we're challenging all schools to increase and improve their daily attendance. So I ask again, we're here today. Are you?
Are you?
What time is it?
Three, two, one, yeah!
So the Liddy Summer Camp program is all about STEM-based projects and different modulators. So the kids are faced with different scientific challenges and different topics focusing on the engineering design program and the scientific method.
Three, two, one.
It's not like regular schools, so that's what makes it engaging. The challenges that the kids have throughout the different modules also make it engaging as well. But it's more so, I'm coming, learning throughout the summer, but I'm having fun throughout the summer as well.
I really liked that they let you use your creativity and they kind of make you feel special. They let you kind of do your own thing. They give you instructions, but they let you mostly follow your own path.
I like that they give us challenges that I'm able to handle. And I really love designing things.
You have to see vegetation is good like always. I saw him at the Victoria Theater and his was good too. So he's just doing the same things and I like his things. I like to see it every time they come here. It's good.
I like that it's fun. He learned a lot of stuff like science lab, reading, and like the science experiment with this bit, it was really cool.
There are others may think, oh, it's summertime, so learning stops. Learning never stops. So as they continue to come to the program, you know, it's just enriching them and inspiring them to want to be adventurers and inspiring them to continue to work with others and collaborate with others. So I do think that this program should continue to be going. That's why this is my third year coming, because again, I'm having fun too with it.
We hear your commitment to learning and we're here to extend the challenge.
That's why we're asking every student, family, and staff member to be present and be engaged.
When we show up, we build a foundation here.
And when we show up, we build a future.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
We are here today!
We believe in the power of showing up.
So we're here today. Are you?
Are you?
Hi, everyone. Today, I'm going to talk to you about bus safety. Every day, thousands of damn public school students ride the bus to and from school, and it's important to know how to stay safe. First things first, make sure to get to your bus stop at least 10 minutes early. And while you're waiting, stand in a safe spot away from the road. Once the bus arrives, go straight to your seat so the bus can start moving again. And remember, while you're on the bus, stay seated and keep the aisles and exits clear. Just like in a classroom, listen to the driver and follow their instructions. This includes no foul language, no sticking your arms or head out the windows, and no eating or drinking on the bus. Lastly, make sure you only get off the bus at your assigned stop and be sure to walk home safely. Let's all work together to follow these rules and keep our bus rides safe for everyone. Thanks for listening and stay safe DPS.
We hear your commitment to learning and we're here to extend the challenge.
That's why we're asking every student, family, and staff member to be present and be engaged.
When we show up, we build a foundation here.
And when we show up, we build a future.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
We are here today!
We believe in the power of showing up.
So we're here today. Are you?
Are you?
Hi, everyone. Today, I'm going to talk to you about bus safety. Every day, thousands of damn public school students ride the bus to and from school, and it's important to know how to stay safe. First things first, make sure to get to your bus stop at least 10 minutes early. And while you're waiting, stand in a safe spot away from the road. Once the bus arrives, go straight to your seat so the bus can start moving again. And remember, while you're on the bus, stay seated and keep the aisles and exits clear. Just like in a classroom, listen to the driver and follow their instructions. This includes no foul language, no sticking your arms or head out the windows, and no eating or drinking on the bus. Lastly, make sure you only get off the bus at your assigned stop and be sure to walk home safely. Let's all work together to follow these rules and keep our bus rides safe for everyone. Thanks for listening and stay safe DPS.
Side ear is right next to them. DB is right here next to them. Hey, everybody understand that.
Let's go!
Get the work, get the work, hey, hey, get the work.
Hold on, y'all, go through.
Hey, hard work on three.
Hard work on me, hard work on three, one, two, three.
All right, hey, get out of here. Let's get out of here.
Hi, I'm Katie Philpott, Preschool Intervention Specialist at Rosa Parks Early Learning Center. My position is to educate all preschoolers who come through our doors into our classroom and service students on IEP, Individualized Education Plan. And it's a way that all students can access the curriculum and education. The kids are vibrant and excited every day to come to school, and they're learning literally how to school, and that's so important. DPS has lots of opportunities for growth. They give you ample professional development hours, which you need for your degree, to continue on teaching. It's a great place where you're going to meet all kinds of people. You're going to meet every kind of student there is, and there's going to be challenges for sure. But when you handle those challenges and overcome them, you'll feel so proud of yourself. I enjoy the people I work with. They are some of the best human beings you will find on this planet. I enjoy how there is a preschool program for families who want access to that. That's very important to the K-12 curriculum. It's a great place to be, and if you look around the buildings, you will see active learning. You will see bulletin boards with the learning on it. So you know that there are great things happening in the classrooms. Every child who enters our classroom feels that their learning is important and that they are valued and they are important. So being the one to do that is like a warm, fuzzy hug.
Hi, I'm Kristin and this is Jay. We are from Wave Foundation. We're housed at Newport Aquarium. And we're here with our African Penguin friend Randy today. And we came out to the school to teach the kids about African Penguins and different animals that are endangered and how we can take care of them.
Hi, my name is Doug and this is Aragon. Aragon is a red-tailed hawk. You can see by his tail and the belly band on the chest. He represents our Wild Places at Five Rivers Metro Parks. We have 16,500 acres of land and multiple facilities. These parks are wonderful for hiking and fishing, backpacking experiences, and just a chance to see beautiful gardens or to learn skills like gardening and boating. And they're a lot of fun. We really want parents and all of our community members to know how to access information on our park programs and special events. And if you use our webpage, you can sign up for electronic newsletters that come directly to your inbox. We also put out Parkways that comes out twice a year, and that's a magazine that's mailed to every household in Montgomery County. So whatever you do that come out and see the wildlife and also enjoy the parks, it helps us be healthy individuals when we're outside, enjoying the fresh air and using our bodies to get some good exercise, and it's part of our healthy, active community. So come and join us and have a lot of fun.
Success looks like you. Never let anybody determine what your success is. Make smart goals. Make goals and make steps to reach your goals. Understand success looks different from anybody else when it's your success.
Your responsibilities take yourself as well as provide some additional assistance and support for your family and other members of this society.
Success looks like us and we are you. We walk some of the same streets, same neighborhoods you guys walk every day, rode the bus, you know, like you guys walked home from practice, walked home from school, had some of the same challenges you guys had. So, you know, I'm here today because of them, and one of these days, you guys are going to be up here because of us.
All I care about overall is the difference that I make in society, the difference I make in my family, the difference I make with people like you, that people take the time when I was your age and younger to drop pearls and wisdom on me. So my job is to do the same to you, and I've done that not just in Dayton, but around the world.
What you do with your life at the end, a lot of your friends aren't going to be able to walk this path with you. You're going to have to separate yourself, and you got to show mentally first that you can get through that challenge.
I wanted to be the best at everything I do, on the football field, basketball court, the track, the classroom. The same mentality that I had engaging in sports, I took it into the classroom.
The more educated you are, the better you do with your financial planning for yourself and your family and those who are around you. But education really is the key to opening so many doors. Education takes you around the world to travel. Education introduces you to people that you never thought you'd be introduced to. Education makes life interesting and fun.
We're going to mention you at the beginning. After that, it's really on you.
I got something on your hair. I appreciate that.
How do you get yours curly? I want my, I want to learn my curls too.
Well, I don't like, like, I don't like her water making her hair look.
See, you make it look curly for the moment, and I only like it for that moment.
Hi, I'm Jocelyn. It's so nice, it's so nice to meet you. Yes.
It was me, Miss Wick. Well, one million wasn't here.
A now call to order this September 16th business meeting. Madam Treasurer, may we have a roll call?
President Goodwin?
Here.
Dr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Lacy?
He has an excused absence.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith? Ms. Reiner?
Present.
Mr. Walker?
Present.
Ms. Wick?
Present.
Six present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the United States, one nation, under God, in the physical, the literary, and justice for all.
Our mission is to inspire, educate, and empower. Our vision is to inspire, educate, and empower scholars for a lasting impact. And our purpose is to cultivate a supportive and engaging educational experience. And if you guys have not noticed, we have a new person sitting on our dais with us, and Ms. Minor. I will give it to you to introduce our new Student Senator.
Thank you, Dr. Goodwin, and it's my pleasure to welcome and introduce to you Ms. Nahia Woods, who is our Officer Member for the Board of Education. We welcome her. She's an active senior at Honets Technology Career Center and doing extremely well, serving on many school committees and district committees. We also have Ms. Chloe Ryan. Thank you for joining us. She's also the first Vice President and will be here visiting us today and being a member of our board as well. So thank you and welcome to the dais, and we're glad to have you. We also, we have two more that are on the, in the organization's second Vice President, Mr. Justin Champion and the Secretary, Rain Wheat. So they'll be joining us. They're not here this evening, but we want to recognize them as well.
Thank you. Well, we are excited to have you guys, and we look forward to, this is now our third iteration of having Student Senate members serve on the board. We are going to move the hearing of the public. I'm actually going to go there before bargaining units. I did get a request from one of our bargaining unit individuals if we could go a little bit back farther because they aren't able to get down here, and we honor that request. Madam Treasurer, do we have anyone signed up to speak from the public?
Yes.
All right, give me one second. Mr. Walker will serve as our timekeeper. Please limit, when you come to the dais, please state your name and address. Please limit remarks to three minutes. It is inappropriate to address any matter involving pending disputes, grievances under a labor agreement, disciplinary actions involving an employee or student, or going labor negotiations, concerns, or matters that have already been settled in, or any matter which, because of its nature, is deemed appropriate to be discussed in executive session. May we have the first speaker?
Alexis Scott. Alexis Scott. That's, that's the only one we have?
Okay, thank you. I will go down into our Superintendent Recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Goodwin.
Madam President.
What's that?
Alex, you're good? Okay.
That's a class. I saw that. Shout out to the class from, what's your guys' class's name? Would you like to come speak? We got a little bit of time. I'll give you three minutes on the clock. It's an awkward walk. People just watching you. Nothing new. No pressure.
Madam President, School Board, and attendees, we are here today as members of a civic leadership participation program, which is powered by School Board School and Learn to Earn. It is a program, I like to say CLP, a program of preparation for passionate people with purpose, who are interested in positive outcomes for students in our community and families, and also interested in the improvement of quality living through platforms from which they are preparing to lead. So with that, thank you for having us.
Thank you. You don't want to tell us anything more about the program? You made the trip. Because, come on, Ms. White, we know you are not, you got a lot of words. Give us a little time.
It is a year-long program with topics that range from how school board works, how city government works. It encompasses expert facilitators, of which you and Mr. Smith were one this past Saturday. We will be taking tours around neighborhoods as we look at asset mapping, which will consist of, or is built on the premise that we have resources and that if we begin to use the resources that we have and link in a collaborative fashion, then of course, we can make movement with regards to ensuring that all people have our shared language, people, opportunities, resources, and all means all.
All right, and if people wanted to find out how they could either become a part of the program or get into the next class, where would they go?
Well, we are going to have what's called a pitch night toward the end of the program. And this is our inaugural class that you see here with us tonight. Not all of them, some are, will be, I just saw myself on camera.
You got to take this moment.
Some of them will be attending virtually tonight, so you don't see the whole cohort. This is the inaugural cohort, and we will be taking applications starting approximately April 2025 for a new cohort.
Twenty-six, we got you. Twenty-six. Well, thank you. Appreciate you giving us a couple of words. Now, the floor is yours. Associate Superintendent Minor?
Thank you.
Your first recommendation?
My first recommendation, I recommend the approval of the following items B through G.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Reiner. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Abstain.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Five yeses, one abstain.
Your next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following DEA after July 10th.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Wick, second by Ms. Reiner. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
No.
Mr. Dr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
No.
Ms. Woods?
No.
Four no, one, two yeses.
Thank, before we go further, let me explain something because I want Ms. Woods to know why some of us vote yes and some of us vote no on that one. The after-July 10th is usually individuals who have signed a teacher contract with the district. So when they're asking us, they're asking us if we would allow people to break their contracts to move forward. So those who vote yes are saying yes, that they would allow that. Those who vote no are saying no, that we don't want to allow them to break that contract.
Can I change my vote?
You sure can.
I changed my vote to yes.
There we go. I got another one.
But now you know, okay? Are there any questions regarding budget information?
Just clarification purpose, actually. We, we approved Superintendent C-10. But we have a motion to reconsider it.
C-10.
Need to change.
Yes, we need to do something else. You guys did approve that, so is there a motion to reconsider? Because there are some additional steps that need to occur for C-10.
I'll motion reconsider Superintendent C-10.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, move the second. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote on the motion to reconsider?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Six yeses.
All right, do you want to vote on this one now, or do you have questions already, Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I thought we were doing. Yeah, I thought we were doing it in executive session.
I'm asking. You have to tell me that. Would you like to talk about this?
It's on your agenda.
This is not my agenda. This is a superintendent's agenda. Would you like to, talk, vote on this one after exec session?
Absolutely.
All right, we hold this one until after exec session. All right, your next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the 48-hour waiver.
So moved.
Present the following contracts.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Wick, second by Dr. Bailey. Are there any questions on the motion? You pause, and then move on. You gotta let her finish her speech. Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Six yeses.
All right, your next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following contracts.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve Superintendent's recommendation B, C, and D.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Mr. Smith. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Do you have any closing comments for us today?
Just thanking everyone for the support, and there was one, there's one contract that we're excited about, and it is to provide the Forks Farms. That'll be coming up, and what that means is we will actually, in partnership with Nutrition Services, Amber's here in the audience, she's collaborating with many of our schools in our career tech programming to provide hydroponics, so we're gonna have students growing vegetables in the schools, and they will be served in the lunchrooms. So, it's a sustainable program that we're very excited about.
Thank you. Madam Treasurer, your first recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following, as reviewed last week. A, certificate of estimated resources. B, permanent appropriations. C, transfer of funds. D, advance of funds. E, monthly financial. F, tuition rates for '25, '26. G, donations. H, purchase requisitions.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Walker. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none. Hold on, I have one question. I do have one question for you. Associate Superintendent Minor, the IXL program that we got for Honets, are we able to look into that for some of our other secondary schools?
Yeah, thanks for asking that question, because we recognize as part of our MTSS program, we do have to provide supplemental interventions, and we're looking at it for a couple of the other high schools.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other questions, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Do you have any closing comments? Madam Treasurer, go ahead.
While she's looking, can I, I asked last week about that $15,000 purchase order that is under the $15,000. If we can just make sure the next meetings, that those are correct where they're supposed to be.
Your closing comments, Madam Treasurer?
Yes. Okay, this month, we worked diligently with Fitch Rating Company in providing the records needed and answering their questions. Fitch is one of the three major global credit rating agencies alongside with Moody's and S&amp;P Global Rating. These companies evaluate the credit worthiness of governments, companies, and the financial institutions, assign, assigns rate, rating to indicate the likelihood of default, default, helps investors assess risk when buying bonds and lending money. This year, our district received A, A-, with stable outlook, an upgrade from A-, which is very good. Also, also, we received A-2 rating from Moody's, which is good. These ratings means very high quality and low risk. What does it mean for us? If our credit rating goes low, it means we have a risk of interest, of our debt going higher. Also, if we won't borrow money, we may not be qualified or pay higher interest rates. So, we are very, very happy to get this upgraded rating. Very good for our district.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Appreciate that information. Always good to hear that things are going well for us, especially if we do fall on sometimes, knowing that we will be in a strong position. Dr. Jones, your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to recommend ratification of the two contracts with the City of Dayton, Power School, as well as the resolution for the payment in lieu of transportation.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Do you have any closing comments?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Minor, for pointing out that Forks Farm deal, the hydroponics, is absolutely amazing. It's gonna be a great experience for our kids. I'd also like to give a huge shout out to one of our community partners, J. McEwen, Dr. B., Craig Anderson, Thomas Gray, and Brandon Calhoun, who were all a part of the, the planning and the training for, for the Crosswalk Initiative, making our streets safer for students to travel, and the residents of Dayton as well.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. Also, thank you to your team who helped put together that Business Services newsletter. It was very informative. Ms. Hamilton, closing comments?
I wanted to take a moment to introduce my new internal audit coordinator, Emily, if you could stand up. Emily is here, and we're super excited. She comes with a wealth of experiences between different accounting roles, but then also some audit experience as well, which will serve her in this position where she will be able to assist with audits, as well as risk assessments, and some independent projects as well. So, I'm really excited to introduce her, and I think she's, I know she's gonna be a great asset to the team.
Awesome. Emily, can you step up to the podium so we can get you on the camera? I hate for them to miss your angles. You just gotta walk up and walk back. Just know that you're actually in the room, you know. Appreciate you. Thank you. All right. I motion to approve the resolution to accept Hewitt-Brahshaw's resignation for retirement purposes and to rehire Hewitt-Brahshaw as the treasurer for the Dayton City School District Board of Education.
I'll second.
Moved by Dr. Goodwin, second by Mr. Walker. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote? Vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
And Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. I move that we approve the following board travel reimbursement. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Goodwin, second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
And Ms. Woods, sorry.
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Resolution to adopt board policy, second reading, in so much as the Board of Education is committed to the continuing updating of its policies, rules, and regulations manual, and the committee which was appointed has been working towards that goal. The following is brought at this time for second reading and compliance with board file. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education of the Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio, hereby accepts and adopts the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the handbook of policies, rules, and regulations. EBBA, First Aid, DEBBA, One-on-One Student Device Policy, IGAE, Health Education, IGBL, Parent and Family Involvement in Education, IGBLA, Promoting Parental Involvement, GFG, Interrogatives and Searches, and, I'm sorry, Interrogations and Searches, and JFGD, Access to Education, Student Privacy, and Immigration Enforcement. I move that we adopt these policies. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Goodwin, second by Ms. Wick. Any questions on the motion?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
If, if someone had comments about this, how does that, how does that work? Like, because I've, out of all of our policy, I don't think I've ever seen anyone actually have like comments. So, like, does that go to Ms. Garrett, and then that just comes to us in a public meeting, or how does that work?
It actually can go to multiple places. It can go to the superintendent's office, which is either the superintendent or his assistant. It can go to the board office, which is Ms. Garrett or assistant. It can come to any of us as well. Any comments there can go to a multitude of those places, and if they have them, they share them with us. When we don't get them, we haven't received any.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
All right.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I would just like to state for, for people who might not know, an interesting thing about policy is we are required by, by law to adopt policies that are passed into Ohio Revised Code. So, every once in a while, well, quite often, we will have a new policy or an updated policy, and it is brought into line with the most, with the updated Ohio Revised Code. We don't agree with all of those, and I'm gonna be very blunt about that. There are some policies and some legislation that is passed in the Ohio State House in regards to health education that I think is not good health education for our students. It is difficult for me personally when it comes to this, because we are required by law to adopt this into our policy handbook, but I know this is not what's, what's best for students. And I just wanted to make that clear. I think it's important to state that every once in a while. I am grateful to be a member of the policy committee, and I'm grateful to be a member of the Board of Education where we can vote directly on policy. We don't agree with everything that's in here, but we respect the, the law that we all agree to abide by when we are sworn in as school board members, and that will explain some of my votes tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Resolution to adopt board policy, first reading, in so much as the Board of Education is committed to the continuing updating of its policies, rules, and regulations manual, and the committee which was appointed has been working towards that goal. The following are brought at this time for first reading and compliance with board file, BFC, policy adoption. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education of the Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio, hereby accepts and adopts the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the handbook of policies, rules, and regulations. EFGA, District Wellness Policy. These policies are being read for the first time. As such, a motion or second is not required. The policy will be available in the superintendent's office for review and comment prior to their second reading and adoption by the Board of Education. Furthermore, the policies will be reviewed by the superintendent's office, the board's office, and the legal department of the Dayton Public Schools prior to the second reading. All right, hearing of the bargaining unions. Avoid it as long as I can. I'm getting toward the end here, so, okay. Just had to go on the record. All right, closing comments. Let's go with Mr. Walker. And it's okay if you don't have anything. No one's gonna get mad at you. It's okay.
I've never went first, so.
I've just said it's okay.
It's just different, all right. So, no, I, I do want to say condolences to DPS families during this time, to tragic, tragic losses. I think it, it, it hits more for me as, you know, our, our city leadership will hold press conferences for other related deaths in the city when it comes to youth, but have not been on the front line for, to combat gun violence here in the city of Dayton, in which they're elected to serve. So, I, I do hope that the community will rally around these families and give them support, as well as our students in our buildings who are going through this tough loss. I think it hits a little bit more because this same building where the student just tried to, he lost his life, is one that we just had the same, similar incident last school year. So, to go through this in that same building, definitely prayers to the students there, the families, and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith? Actually, sorry, Ms. Wick?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody who came out tonight. Super fun. I had a great morning. I started my morning out great, spending it with the Student Senate at Premier Health, where the kids, both Chloe and Navea, got to listen to a leader in the organization talk about critical conversations, and it was just so enlightening to listen to these young people go through a queue of like, okay, how would you handle this situation, whether or not it was a, I wanted to get my hoodie back, or what was going on, and have them go through the defensive act of it, or then have them go through communicating in more effective ways with dignity and respect, and it was really just wonderful. It's just, so thank you, girls, for allowing me to be a part of that. They also got to tour the whole facility where they train nurses there. We identified at least, we have five kids that are interested in nursing, that MICA has pathways to help them get into Wright State, into Sinclair, so it's just really wonderful. So, thank you to superintendent and leadership that continue to develop those rich relationships with our partnerships, including Premier Health. Yay for the hydroponic lattice. I've been asking for that for years. I'm so excited. I love to see these facilities turned into more hands-on opportunities. It really gets our kids exciting. In that regard, I attended the Ford NGL meetings last week where we continue to develop these models around these academies that we're building that are intentional with the work that we're doing with our, our community partners. In that same regard, I went to a presentation by Joby Aviation, who is really, you guys, the Jetsons are gonna happen here in Dayton, Ohio. I mean, we are literally becoming the capital of building these aviation, these taxi, four-unit taxis that will, you know, get you from Columbus to Cincinnati and in bigger cities all around the city. These units are made of composites that are resins that are poured into models that make the taxis. The heaviest thing in the unit is a battery, and Joby Aviation was at our Ford NGL work last week too, and you think about the opportunity that's gonna come for these young students to be exposed to for really good-paying jobs. I'm just super excited to be part of the work. So, all right, I was a little chatty tonight. Thank you all. It's a great start to the school year. Continue to feel the positive momentum around the work that you are all doing, and so incredibly grateful. It's not perfect, and it'll never be perfect, but certainly see all of the effort being put forth to make things better wherever we go. Condolences to our families. Yes, this is a complicated world. Gun violence is real. I'm excited to hear more from our city leadership, the Youth Violence, Gun Violence Protection Program that is underway. There's been a few stumbling blocks, but there is action being taken. But where you are, take your action too. If you see something, say something. If you know how people have weapons, you see something, you say something. It's important, you young students, people that are playing around with guns. It is way too serious. If you see something, say something. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Reynard?
Thank you, President Goodwin. I have a number of things, so please be patient with me. I had the great honor and to go to two back-to-back conferences last week. It was a mistake on my Um, I had the great honor and, uh, to go to two back-to-back conferences last week. It was a mistake on my part when I signed up for one of them. And when I realized that they were back-to-back, I had some, um, I, I decided that they were both really important to go. The first was, I went out to DC for my annual advocacy on the Hill. Um, as a delegate, uh, for this congressional district, um, by the Ohio School Board Association, it's my honor to go on behalf of OSBA and represent, uh, the school districts in this 10th congressional district. I am partnered, I have two partners. One is our alternate, and the other, um, is Megan Sparks from the Centerville School Board. And we go and we meet with legislators, and we talk about what it's like in our districts. We advocate for, um, there were seven items in the legislative platform, um, increased funding for K-12 education, supporting public education as a whole, child nutrition programs, uh, IDEA funding, which is, um, Special Education, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, um, child nutrition, broadband connectivity. And we're giving these legislative platform items, and it's kind of like we have a coloring book, and it's our job to color in the details and to share with our legislators and staffers, um, what it's like in our districts and why these things that we're advocating are really important. Um, to bring you up to date, I talk about Individuals with Disabilities Education Act every single time I go. Um, a lot of the legislation that we're working on, this is, this is a long game. Um, legislation doesn't usually happen quickly. Um, the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act was passed in 1975 with the promise that if we educated, uh, we are mandated to educate, uh, students with disabilities, but the federal government would fund up to 40% of those costs. The federal government has only covered, the highest it's ever covered in the cost of educating students with disabilities is 18%, and we are currently at 11%. It's the lowest I've ever known it to be. Um, and seeing as how we have a very large number of students with, um, IEPs and disabilities in our districts, it's about 20%, this is vitally important for the work that we do. Um, it's not just teachers in the classroom. It's professional development for every single person that interacts with students. Um, cafeteria workers, transportation, um, custodial staff, everybody that interacts with a student at some point in the day, um, should go through professional development to know, this is how you interact with students who have autism or, um, other students that have accommodations. Um, you know, in order to serve our students well, we need to make sure that we are preparing our teachers and our staff how to serve them well. Um, and we had a great day. Um, I'm gonna call my board colleagues' attention to, I have written up a conference report for each of the conferences that I attended with some, um, additional notes in a separate document, if you're interested in looking at them. Um, the first day at the COSBA advocacy conference, um, we spent all day. Um, it gave me a renewed appreciation for, this whole week gave me a renewed appreciation for how hard it is for students to be in a classroom all day, and, um, uh, it, I just had forgotten what it's like to sit in a conference room all day long with not very much time for stretching and moving. Um, we were really lucky to listen to Bob Woodward, who was our keynote speaker, um, and he was interviewed, and it was really, really interesting to listen to him. Um, we got to, uh, listen to some panel with some congressional legislative staff. Um, part of the job of going out there and advocating, it's not just saying, um, you know, this is what we're advocating for, and this is why. It's understanding the really complex relationships that legislators have out there. It's understanding how they work with each other. You know, there's, uh, a huge range of, uh, political opinions on the Hill. You have to be able to build relationships with them no matter what, um, find common ground and understand that there's nuances that you might not have been aware of before you go up there and be able to listen to them and speak to them, um, and connect with them. And so the, the interviews with the congressional, um, panel was really interesting. And then we had, um, appointments. Uh, the next day, we went to the, in the morning, and we went to the Capitol Building, and we always have breakfast with, and we invite the senators, and we usually speak to at least one of them. Sometimes if we're lucky, we get both. Sometimes we get a staffer, and I got to speak with Senator Husted for the first time. Um, he emphasized his dedication to public education as workforce development. Um, I, to that, I would say yes. I think it's a little bit more nuanced than that, but I'm grateful for his support of workforce development. Um, and then we had a meeting with a staffer, um, from our member of Congress, Mike Turner. Um, he, uh, his staffer was very kind. Um, it was, uh, I've been to the office many times before, and it was a really great conversation. Um, from there, I went to the Council of Urban Boards of Education Conference. Um, and I need to share a couple of things from that conference that were really, really impactful. Uh, the first thing is, we got to go out to the new building of Compton Unified School District. They have a new high school, Performing Arts High School. And we talked a lot about performing arts and trying to get, um, you know, possibly a performing arts elementary school, and then that kind of turned into expanded, um, arts education for our elementary here. Um, and so I, I didn't, it, it wasn't given, and in any way related to the conversations we've had in this district, but it was really, really interesting to see the great gains that they've made in Compton. Um, I was really impressed with the tour there, and then we saw their middle school. The students did a fantastic job of showing the huge range of programming that they have out there. They have so many partnerships with tech companies. I was, it, I was a little surprised by every single classroom we went into. It seemed like they had a different partnership with a different company. And I thought, there's a lot, there are a lot of contracts here. I would hate to have to sift through those contracts. Um, the second thing that I want to mention, um, is that I had the luck to listen to Bryan Stevenson. For, he's the founder of the Equal Justice Initiative. It was one of the most incredible speeches I've ever heard. Um, it was a call to action. It was a reminder of what we're doing. Um, I admired him for years, and I didn't ever think I was gonna be lucky enough to hear him speak. It reminded me of the things that I need to focus on and the things I need to work on. It was a call to action on, in a personal way, in a lot of ways. Um, but I wanted to repeat a few things that I think are just relevant to the city, um, and to the work that we do. He said, "Our commitment to children has to be by how we treat poor kids. That is how we prove that we're truly committed to children, the least of us." And he talked a lot about our unwillingness now collectively as a society, um, to look at the past and accept what maybe we have done, maybe what our ancestors have done, to accept that, not fight it, not be afraid to face it. He said that we deny ourselves the beauty of justice when we refuse to tell the truth. I'm grateful to be part of a district that always is committed to telling the truth and doing right by our students. Um, and then the last thing I want to bring up is I went to a very, very fascinating, I went to so many good sessions, um, that you can see by the conference report, but I would like to call the board's attention to the notes that I made, um, for advancing equity through a student outcomes-focused approach to governance, um, given by Creighton Elementary School District, which is in the Phoenix area. Um, they went through a process, um, guided by the Council of Great City Schools, which we're a member of. Um, and it was a process, and, um, they did it over several retreats, um, and it was for both their, uh, direct reports for their board, for their board and for their superintendent. And what they did is they really dug into how governing boards exist to carry on the community's vision and values of that community, and how they specifically designed the structure of their board to work to improve student outcomes. Um, they talked about effective school, school boards and what that governance looks like. I'm sure that's a conversation that you guys have all been talking about right now. And it made me think a lot about, um, you know, I, I hope that I will have the privilege to be here for four more years, but I might not be here next year. Um, and we don't know what the board will look like this year. What I do know is that we can set the board up, um, next year, whoever is here on the stais for success, by committing to working with the Council of Great City Schools to do that here in Dayton. I was so impressed with the, with the work that they do and the way that they're able to do it and the relationships they have with, with each other. I would like to open up a conversation now, if the board wants to, or I'm happy to, to dig a little bit deeper and get some more information. But I think that the board next year, whoever is here, um, would benefit by sitting down and setting goals as a new board, or, we're gonna have at least one, one board member, because we have one board member who's not running for reelection, and, um, digging into what our goals are as a board here in the district, and making sure that we're all on the same page and establishing that relationship of respect, um, for ourselves and for each other and for this district. Um, I would be happy to support that and, um, hope that it would benefit the board, um, next year and beyond. Um, and then lastly, there were a couple of really interesting conversations that I had about, um, converting our, uh, transportation bus fleet to electric. Um, I made some connections. And then lastly, I thought you guys would find this interesting. I ran into a bunch of, uh, superintendents and board members who were excited because they were implementing a no-cellphone policy in our districts the way we've done for a couple of years. And I said, "How are you guys enforcing that? Like, what's your method?" And they said, "Oh, we're using these cool new things called yonder pouches." And I was the Debbie Downer that had to say, "You might want to explore other ways of, uh, enforcing that." And I, I told them about a lot of the creative methods that I may or may not have heard of from my own household, um, focus group, about how the yonder pouches were easy to access. Anyway, it was a fantastic trip. I'm really, I, I'm glad to be home, and I'm grateful for the opportunity I could do it and better the district by attending. Thank you, President Goodwin.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Um, I've been busy. I've been busy. I will be, I will try not to be lengthy, but it is a day that ends in Y. So, it just happens that way. I want to shout out first our Stivers football team. I'm so proud of them to get out there and show that, yes, students can be artistic and athletic, which for some reason, they've pretty much already shown, but for some reason, people think that football is such a different thing. But I am so proud of those little, little guys out there. I shouldn't say little, but they're little guys out there. But I'm just really proud of them and their coach and the staff there and all the things they've done. Um, it's been amazing to be over at Welcome Stadium. Shout out to everybody that works over there to provide a great atmosphere for our students and families. Um, once again, we had another round of little ones out there. Um, if anything, you have to see when they get out there and they do their little run on the field. I am definitely not going to be doing that because I decided running is not good for me. I'm getting up in age. Can't be out there with them doing all of that. I know, I lost. I wasn't trying to say that. I lost, yeah. Can't run out there. Um, it's really good, not only just seeing the athletes out there, but seeing the students that work with audio visuals, seeing the, the, the students that are involved in band, our cheerleaders, seeing our volleyball teams and everything going on there, just all of those things that add to students having extracurricular activities, which then give them more chances to be around their peers, to be active, to be around positive adults, to do the things that we need to do to put them in, uh, better situations. Um, always a shout out to everyone that works in our district. I went over to Transportation and got to talk to some good folk over there. Uh, really love the people that get up early in the morning to make sure our lovely little ones get to school. Um, I also had the privilege to speak to the civic li, uh, leadership program on this past Wednesday. I want to thank Ms. Maddie White for inviting me, although I've known Ms. Maddie White for a while, so it's really not inviting me. It's kind of voluntold. That's how, that's how she rolls. That's my girl. But I really want to say I appreciate every one of you in that program, um, because what you are doing is so, so needed at this time, not only in our local community, but just across America. We really, really need people that are engaged and are learning about the communities that they would serve before they try to serve those said communities. That is such a huge lift when you look around this country and you see so many things going on. The fact that in 2025, we can see that two men were found hanging in trees in this country today. Like, those kind of things, we cannot just step past and not understand that these are things that happen because of politics. And we will not get in a situation where politics will change anything for the better until politics are changed for the better. And that is why I, as I sit in this seat, I understand the frustration of so many people. When I look around this state, when I look around our country, and we see the things that we know are the root causes of violence, and we ignore them. And we talk about how do we get along better. We talk about giving children tools to have better conflict resolution, yet we do not see any action on things that change poverty. We do not see anything that works to change the socioeconomic factors in our city, in our state, and in our country that really changes things. And until we get people that are dedicated to changing those root causes, all we will get are people that give platitudes and do press conferences and have cool programs in place to address the top layer without a, understanding and knowing that you have to address that bottom layer of what is really causing these changes. Um, and to get there, we just have to be uncomfortable. We have to be comfortable in being uncomfortable. When you look around our state and our country, and we talk about so many things, but we ignore the things we see daily. We see more movement in the national media and in even our local media about things that happen outside the borders of the United States than what happens inside of Dayton, Ohio. And until we get to that point of when we're going to do something about that, we're never gonna be there. We're never gonna be proactive. We're never going to do those things. If we look just even in Ohio, which I understand all the work that goes in, and I show love to all the politicians around Ohio, but when we look at the low state investment in key programs, we look at how our temporary assistance for needy families is more than 50% lower than just states around us like Kentucky. Like, these are things that are actual things that have to be changed at so many levels, and I'm so glad that there is a program now to work with people to give them these kind of data points early before they run for office, before they sit in these seats, so they come in armed with the things that they need to know to move these things forward. So I want to thank Ms. Maddie White and the people at Learn to Earn, and everybody that actually stepped up to be part of this first cohort. Um, and it was a joy to sit and talk with you and see where you come from and why you want to get involved and how you want to see yourselves get involved. And I just really want to share that with everybody in our community. Find a space to plug in, because politics, as they are currently, will not save us. We will have to save us. And if that means us getting into politics, then that's how we have to do it. So with that, please try to keep the main thing, the main thing, and that should always be our students. And that means we have to do the same thing for the people that serve our students and our families. So with that, thank you, Madam President, and please take care of yourselves and each other.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan? You have any comments?
She went, oh.
Ms. Ryan? Ryan is down there on the floor. Chloe Ryan, if you could. To the podium.
Didn't know somebody was out there.
Closing comments for us, whatever you have.
Yeah. Uh, good evening, Madam President.
You can pull the mic down, so.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to, I guess, introduce myself. My name is Chloe Ryan, and I'm the first vice president of our Student Senate for this year. Um, I'm a senior at Stivers School for the Arts, um, where I play the viola in the orchestra. I'm also a member of the Dayton Philharmonic Youth Orchestra, so I really love being a part of that. I'm super excited to be part of the Student Senate this year and see what we can do with the district. I think it's always important, um, to work with the communities around you and try to push for as many opportunities for the students as you can. Um, as I've been a member of Dayton Public Schools since fourth grade, and I'm just excited for this opportunity to do as much as I can. So, thank you.
Thank you. You see how you brought energy back to the room? Ms. Woods?
That's my vice president. That's my girl. But, hi, I'm Navea Woods. I'm a senior at David H. Ponens, and you guys know me pretty well. But I just wanted to come, and I wanted to say a few things that I've done myself and, um, that I've seen in my school. I feel like my school has definitely improved under the supervision of Dr. Brown. He's a really good principal. Um, I was able to go to another Ford NGL meeting where we talked about the finishing of Port Trevor graduate, and we moved on to the next steps. And I got to be the, the voice for a DPS student, which I really enjoyed. I liked being able to say how we feel and what I feel like we need. Um, Ponens's Ally Health class is going really well. We came, we were actually here yesterday during our background checks, and we leave to go to clinicals in October. So we're doing really good in our Ally Health class. Swim season is approaching, and when, when swim season starts, I hope to see all of you guys at a swim meet. All of you guys at at least one.
Are you on the team again?
Yes.
All year?
Oh!
So I'll see you.
Right, that was a lot of shade. I applied for the debut top ball, and I applied for the Gate Scholarship. So, fingers crossed. And I also applied for several colleges, my top being the Ohio State University. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. They even clap after y'all speak. No one else gotta clap. I just want you to know that. Dr. Bailey?
Yeah, I, I'm just so proud to, uh, have these two students, uh, be present with us, uh, and for those that, that are out in the community to see what our, our students at DPS are doing. Ms. White, I thank you for bringing your group out today. I hope you all got something out of this, uh, and those that are watching. and those that are watching out in the public as well. Thank you all for coming out, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Winfrey, I waited so long for you. Would you like to address us as a bargaining unit? I stalled, and I did a lot of things.
I didn't talk that much today.
But I know that you would like to address us, so if you would like to come, this would be the second opportunity for you.
Thank you for protocoling his status.
Absolute. Amen. Amen. Thank y'all for allowing me the opportunity to speak in a little reminder. Just a second. Just got off my route, so I had to secure that first to make sure the kids get home safely. But thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on some issues that seems to be a reoccurring issue that we need to resolve as soon as possible or come to some type of resolution. I'm here speaking on behalf of pay. We are hourly workers and at Transportation, and anyone who do not know me, I'm sorry. My name is Marie R. Winfrey, and I'm Local 627 Transportation Union President. After everything all at one time, but that's okay. I know how to verbalize. And so I'm here and quite some questions on some of the things that we had took place. The board of District Dr. Lawrence came to us with an MOU asking us to see the bargaining units that we can change our step increases and anniversary dates and longevity dates to get them where they can be all in one area, one date, one time. We have several MOUs that he presented to us, and also Alex Ewing, the way that we should have that set up. And the thing is that our MOU was set for that we will have our anniversary date, August the first, which is your step increase, will be received to us in our checks. Also, it states in here the longevity that the ones that has worked 20 years and over, they receive once a year, and that will be on a single date in September of each year. With that being said, the single date in September, it could be on any date. It does not have to be on a pay date or a pay cycle date. We was expecting a lot of the senior drivers to receive that the first pay in September, which was this past week. Also, we was expecting to have our step increases on August the first, as is stated in this MOU, which that did not take place. We have several things that they said that they wanted to streamline the process of this, and we took it in good faith with the board and when it was presented to us. But as of today, it has not been in good faith. It has not been in good faith. They have not came forth with several things of the anniversary, step increases. Everyone has not received it. Everyone has not received. Anyone hasn't received a longevity pay. And then we also still have our 1% that is in our wage that we're supposed to receive in the 25, 26, and July the first. That still has not been received per our contract. So the issues we having with at this time is the issues of not receiving what is supposed to be given to us or we earn as we work. We are hourly workers, and some of them is getting into hardship at this time of things that's not taking place. We know the economy has increased. We do know that we have things that have elevated. People still have to pay their rent, their mortgage, and when you cut their check or don't proceed to do the right thing in their pay, that calls a hardship. So we're saying that some of the things that's going on in Transportation, and I'm only speaking for the Local 627, is that we need to figure out the district, how we can do things correctly. Let us do things together. That is corrected. This is an MOU that was signed by the board. We agreed on it, all the bargaining units, and it's not being given to us correctly as we agreed on it with our signatures. I'm bringing that forth to you. Also, some issues dealing with other things pertaining to 26 pay, but we have an upcoming meeting Thursday morning till we can resolve that, that y'all received the email on. So that is being resolved this upcoming Thursday to opt out those drivers that wants to be off of 26 pay. But it is what I'm coming. It's just that, to be fair, we really don't want to really want to say unfair labor practice, but please consider those workers. They stated, Dr. Jones stated that we had a lot of drivers off Friday. Well, Friday was a payday Friday, but a lot of them was very upset because their check wasn't correct. Thirty-six, if I'm correct. Two uncovered routes since school started. All the other routes has been covered all up until this time. That is not good to say that you have people come because their finances is not in order. So I'm asking the board, please consider, while we bring it towards the MOU that was brought forth, that we get this taken care of as soon as possible so we can move forward in this community and make things correct. We still continue to pick up our students correctly. We still put them in a safe place, and we still continue to do our job assignment. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And we have several meetings already lined up, but Ms. Winfrey is correct. This this one part of the pay piece, we do need to figure out a solution sooner than later because our drivers are important, and they do a really good job. And this year, we actually have been off to an amazing start on this piece of it. So if we can, as a board, get a update on the remedies that were brought for us, kind of what timeline we're looking at to get these resolved, that would be great. Couple things, and thank you for coming out.
You're welcome.
Right off work. I appreciate you, Ms. Winfrey. A couple things. First, I want to thank the entire staff that helps with the board agenda. This was minus if you take out all of our comments and all that, this was a fairly smooth meeting, and I appreciate you guys for the work that you put in because that kind of helps us not have to do a little double dutch thing. So thank you all for not only meeting the timelines, getting stuff in, and responding to questions that you have received. That way, when we actually get to the meeting, we can actually just conduct the business. I want to shout out our team. If you guys didn't know, our report card came out. So, you know, kind of a little big deal there, you know, 4.5 out of 5 in Career Tech. That's pretty awesome. Good for you all on that piece. You saw, if you didn't know, our achievement gap, we made some gains there, jumped to a 2. That's pretty out. That's where you should clap. Those are really good things. Yes. See, Ms. Woods would have said, "You guys have been all over it." But I mean, I just read. You really got to see some really good stuff here. The report card is one metric. It is not the only metric that we are judged off of, but it is one that is highlighted throughout the district. It does not talk about all the other amazing things that are going on in our district, but it is good to see that some of the work, we've seen some movement, and we are getting some progress in those pieces there. I do want to also give a shout out to the Career Tech team. Tonight, the board approved for the Spirit Shop to have workers. We will be open at least two days a week now. See, y'all not y'all not understanding the demand that we have at the Spirit Shop about being open right now. With the addition of, I think I got five, and I got a couple more coming, you guys at least see us twice a week. So please come out and continue to support the shop in that piece of it. I do want to highlight, too, one of the good things. Every time you drive down on Brown Street, if you see the One Main construction, that is kind of one of the deals we are into, is something really good that I know I'm very proud of this board is some of the 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 deals that we got out there for our district students. Ms. Woods is one of the individuals. She actually works for Premier Health right now, and that's kind of a part of that partnership. Her and multiple students have that. The Student Senate gets some more exposure to things. One thing, because now we are in September, I want to note that we get two scholarships from the University of Dayton as flyer promises. I really hope that our seniors take advantage of applying and competing for that scholarship because no matter what, at least two students from our district will be at University of Dayton because of some of the work that this board did to make sure that our kids got those type of opportunities. So excited about, we are going into our second year of being able to get that. We have two there right now. We'll have two for the next 10 years, and we're hoping that to see just more come out of that piece of it. I do echo my board members' comments, like the families, you are greatly in our prayers, and it is an unimaginable thing that unfortunately is something that we continue to see in our district. Violence is not new to us, but it should not become normalized with us. It should be something that we are actively trying to figure out ways to get our kids beyond this moment of their life so they can get to adulthood, and they can go on and build a better place for us. I do hope that we continue to not only talk about what changes we're looking for, but we actually are a part of that change piece of it in those conversations. I will echo, too, again, that I said last week. I do want to continue to remind our staff and individuals who want to be a part of this district, please be mindful of your social media. We do not live in a forgiving world right now. We do not live in a rational world at times. Please understand that the predicament that some people are put into when you share thoughts that may just be more appropriate for you to have amongst friends and family on social media, you you can put your job at jeopardy, and we are seeing that in other districts. And I am fortunate that we have not seen any of that right now going on for us. Please keep that standard up. Please talk to your colleagues. Please remind them that, again, you do represent Dayton Public in everything you do, whether you're here at work or you're off the clock. We want you all here. We need you all here. But we also understand, too, if our community finds or does not find value in something or they feel as if you have crossed lines, then you put this Board of Education in a very awkward position because, again, we serve children, and the behaviors that we put out into the world have to be acceptable to the people who put us in these positions to serve their children. So with that, pursuant to section 12122G2 of the Higher Revised Code, I move that this board go into executive session. Way too many numbers. The meeting is being held to consider the appointment employment dismissal of a public employee in deferment returning involving pending in imminent court action. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Goodwin, second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions on the motion? Seeing done, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ryanard?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Six yeses.